Do on a road advisory meeting.
Chairman, we are live.
Okay, welcome, everybody. Today is January 3rd. It's 2:00. We have a public hearing for vacation 21-07, a portion of Longhorn Way and Durham Lane. And the way this public hearing will work is I'll ask for any ex parte or conflict of interest. We'll go into the applicant, and I'm assuming, Dan, you are the applicant, and give us kind of what you're trying to do, and then we'll listen to staff, ask her any questions that she has, and then we will take public testimony from anyone in the audience that's either a proponent, or is neutral, or is opposed. And then, once we take all that testimony, we'll close the public hearing and deliberate. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to you, Dan.
No.
No?
Ex parte conflict of interest.
Oh, yeah, I forgot to do that. First, I need to ask both commissioners if they have any ex parte or conflict of interest in this.
I do not.
I do not.
I do not either, so we will...
Staff report.
Then the staff report, okay?
Okay. So the staff report for vacation 2107, vacation of a portion of Longhorn Way and Durham Lane. The applicants are Daniel Burrup and James Hovren. Daniel Burrup and James Hovren requesting a vacation of a portion of a public road right-of-way, specifically part of a large curved intersection of Longhorn Way and Durham Lane, a 90-degree turn from east to west and north to south. This part of the public road right-of-way is not maintained by Valley County. The applicants believe that the amount of traffic on this road will never justify such a large turning area. That does not include the utility easements in this section of road right-of-way. If the public road right-of-way is vacated, the land would become the property of the adjoining lot owners. And then I listed those lots and the receiver people that would have to agree to accept the deeds. Emeny Wagon Wheels subdivision number three was recorded on October 18, 1961, at Book Two, page 43. At a properly noted public hearing on November 10, 2021, the Valley County Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the proposed vacation. Facts and conclusions were attached for your review. Legal notice for this public hearing was posted in the Star News on December 16 and December 23. Potentially affected agencies were notified on December 3. Neighbors within 300 feet of the property were notified by fact sheets sent December 3, and the site was posted December 21. And the application and notifications were also put on the Valley County website. Agency comments received. Laura Lacy, Idaho Power Associates Real Estate Specialist, stated Idaho Power does maintain electrical facilities within the right-of-way and must retain all existing rights related thereto. Accordingly, Idaho Power requires that any vacation of the right-of-way by Valley County reserved to Idaho Power be continued right to operate, maintain, repair, replace, or otherwise modify or add to Idaho Power's facilities within the right-of-way, including the right of ingress and egress. That's in a letter that's attached for your review dated October 26. Central District Health has no objections to the proposal. Jeff McFadden, Valley County Road Department Director, has no issues with vacating the wide corner. It is not a county-maintained road. Judge Ellis, Valley Rural Fire Protection District Fire Marshal, has no comments or concerns. And the neighborhood comments that were received were part of the public hearing. Those were also attached for your review. Valley County Code 10-6-2 requires the commission review the proposed vacation with regard to future development of the neighborhood. The commission shall also take into consideration the interests of adjacent property owners of utilities and their various public agencies pertinent to the application. In summary, Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval. Staff recommends a survey be done to determine exactly where the property line is located in relation to the center line of the traveled way. Staff recommends retaining 25 feet from center line of traveled way, not platted right-of-way. The board needs to determine if the future development of the neighborhood would be inhibited by the vacation and/or variance. And deeds will need to be prepared by the applicants to convey the property along the road right-of-way to the adjacent property owners. Valley County will be the grantor. The deed must include an utility easement as requested by Idaho Power. Valley County Commissioners will sign a declaration of vacation if approved, and a copy of the resolution in due time sent to Laura Lacy, Idaho Power, by the Planning and Zoning staff. Staff's recommended motion, if you choose to approve this, is written here with conditions of approval, which is prepare a record or survey supposed to accurately prepare deeds to the adjoining property owners, not vacate the right-of-way closer than 25 feet of the center line of the traveled way. And the approval is contingent on all Idaho Power easements being included in the deeds. Since the staff report was completed, Jeff McFadden, Road Superintendent, said the road has no county maintenance. That was in another letter. And then I, in your email I sent, the staff report, I put the proposed motion. And that ends my staff report unless you have questions.
I guess my biggest thing is the fact that Fire Department is okay with that road being narrow. They don't have any issues with it. That would be my only concern, is getting a big fire truck in there. Because it does look like it's a pretty heavily wooded area.
This side, if you go down this lane, you jog a couple times and cross, and go down Durham Lane and cross.
Hereford's back in there.
No, no, for the... Anyway, so you go back, and this dead ends at the lake. And it makes this white sweeping platted right-of-way. But the road itself is just a 90-degree turn. And it just loops back around, and there's probably maybe eight or nine lots that access off that loop.
That's what I was going to ask. Are the rest of those already developed and built?
No, not all of them. A lot of them are owned jointly.
Because there are a lot that access before it gets back to Hereford.
Hereford's that, that's what I was thinking. And it's the loop from Hereford, Durham Lane and Longhorn. There's quite a few lots down there.
Okay, any more questions for staff? And I will turn to Dan. Welcome, Mr. Burrup. Do you have anything else you want to add?
Yes, and thank you for accommodating my attendance this way today on short notice. So you had the question about the fire access, and that is a question that I did speak to the fire, I don't know, is he a fire marshal, the captain? He called and asked me some questions, and he said he wouldn't have a problem with it, because if you zoom out on that particular subdivision, it's a continuous loop. There are two access points. He did indicate, just frankly, his words were, if it was the only access, if that was the only road, then he would be hesitant to give up that corner. But since it's a full drive-through in and out, it enters off of that Durham and Hereford Way area, and then it reenters again. He didn't have a problem with that, and it was consistent with the other subdivisions in that area. So, and I think that his letter talked about that in the, that you have a copy of there. So he didn't have a problem at all as far as the fire access. And then the only other thing I wanted to talk about is, and I guess I could try to share my screen to show you the measurements. I'm going to, I'm going to see if that works. Can you see my screen now?
Yep.
Okay. So this is what I had emailed in, and it's just some measurements off of your assessor website, which was very handy. And so the recommendation from staff was to keep a 25-foot distance from the center line of the current traveled roadway. And underneath all this, you can kind of see the center of that road. The 25-foot doesn't, I mean, I'm fine with that, frankly, because on my side, my property is this one right here, 12879, and the other applicant, Mr. Hovren, is this one. So by maintaining a 25-foot distance from the central, center of the traveled roadway is totally fine with us as far as this goes. But if you take a look at, on the Durham side, on this side, the current traveled roadway actually isn't centered. And so to be able to, like, at this point right here, and this is just an estimate based on the map measurement tool, but at this point right here, the narrowest point, it looks like it's about 15 feet from the center of the traveled roadway to this neighbor's property. And then it gradually gets wider until it's not an issue at all. But particularly, this neighbor, who isn't one of the applicants, but, you know, well, it wouldn't be possible to do that, to maintain that 25-foot right here. And it's simply because the road isn't centered on, the traveled road isn't centered on the platted road map. So I just wanted to see if, you know, if something like this would make sense, if you just took the momentum of the, of the property lines that come all the way down the street, and they kind of cross at this point, and we just do a swooping turn, if that were maintained, at no point is it ever less than the 50-foot width that was required at the time and is, is the current code for this particular road. It's not ever below that 50. It gets as wide as, I think this is 86. I have to look at that. Yeah, 88 feet would be the, approximately the widest point, and then it would go back down to about the 50 coming around here. It would maintain that 25-foot that you want all the way around until it just touches this neighbor. It just wouldn't work for this little section right here. So that was just my thoughts on that. Because if you went with the, if you went with the 25-foot, then the road, the new road would, or the survey would show the road kind of coming down here, and it would do a little bit of a, kind of just awkward turns that wouldn't be very, you know, consistent. I mean, we can do whatever you want to do, but, but that was just a suggestion. I thought I would just see what you guys thought about, about that.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Hasrick. Did you talk to the person at 212 Durham Lane? Do they know this is going on?
We have not. We tried to reach out to them, but they're the only neighbor. So we did reach out. We did get in contact with the neighbor at 214 Durham Lane. He wasn't, he was undecided on this. He just didn't want to be a part of the application, but he wasn't opposed. And we never could get feedback from the person at 212.
Well, Cindy, let me ask you this. The guy, the person at 212, if they wanted to leave the survey, they, and they didn't want the road that close, they could pay to have the road moved, I guess it's south. I'm not sure which direction. To get back to the 25 feet from center line, right, that would be at their expense?
Right, but there's no reason for them to move. The concern...
Because it gets so close.
Is, you can't do 25 feet from center, then just to the platted right-of-way, so long as you maintain the 50-foot right-of-way.
We don't care where the road is then, in that 50-foot right-of-way.
As long as it, it shows the utility easements on it, still within that 50-foot right-of-way.
Right. But the, I'll tell you that the neighbors on the other side of the road are concerned that if you vacate right up against that traveled way, that if this is widened, it's going to push the road into their property. And they're going to lose their area.
Right. And it looks, it's kind of hard to tell, on 211 Durham, it looks like there's a house there that is pretty darned close to the southern edge of that right-of-way. Kind of a blue roof.
Well, there's one at 209.
There's not one at 211? It looked like a house on my map.
If you don't mind, can I interject?
Oh, go ahead, Dan.
Okay, thank you so much. So what you see on 211 Durham, that's an old manufactured home. A tree fell on it a couple years ago, and that's now removed. So that, that lot is completely vacant right now.
Okay, good.
But at 209, there is a structure there, yes.
Okay, any more questions? Oh, go ahead.
And stating that, you know, 211's afraid they're going to lose some of their property. Well, it's not their property. It's a road right-of-way, right?
Right.
So they lose it, it's not theirs to start with. I mean, as long as we state that that road needs to remain within that 50-foot road easement, then...
Right, but without even a survey to show us where that road's located.
I think it needs to be surveyed.
Then we don't know where that road is located.
Okay.
In that right-of-way. I mean, if you turn, if you turn that right-of-way and just make a 90-degree here, where's that road? That's why it was 25 feet from center, the recommendation, so the road wasn't going to have to be moved.
But we could reference existing, the existing roadway, you know, needs to remain within the 50-foot road easement. And then if the homeowners decide to go in and do an upgrade or change that at all, we don't care as long as it's within that 50-foot.
Right, but we don't know if the road's even in that 50 feet.
And I think where it would kick us later on is they want committed, build something, there's setbacks.
Right, so we need to know exactly where that right-of-way is going to be. We don't know where the traveled way is.
Without a survey, you don't know where the utility lines are either.
Right. And then we felt it was pretty safe to say 25 feet of the center of the traveled way.
But you only get 15 feet on that one property. So what's the resolution to that?
Well, then it's still the right-of-way.
So what you...
That's not the part we're vacating. The road's going to meander up towards the north.
I get that, but it's unclear to me when you say the road needs to be within the 25 feet of the traveled center line.
Right-of-way, yeah.
We already know that, that that's not feasible, because that road is already closer than 25 feet to that property line.
But we don't know that, because we don't know where that property line is.
But if we state that in a motion today, there's an assumption that that, looking at the maps that we have in front of us, that that is not feasible to request what we're requesting. I mean, I understand the need for a survey, and I agree with that 100%. But if we make a statement that something is a certain footage, I would assume that we have to make sure that that's feasible to do that.
Well, it would be 25 feet from the center line of the roadway. If you only vacate that portion, if you don't own it, you can't vacate it. So if that 25 feet goes into the private property, then you're not vacating anything adjacent to that property line.
Okay, I understand. I understand what you're saying.
Oh, we're going to do, oh, you're asking for, Cindy, is this to survey the right-of-way, not where the road is?
Well, no, they need to show us where the traveled way is.
Yeah.
Because typically, you have a road, and then when you go through your snowplowing, the snow's going to go on both sides of it. So you want to maintain, I mean, Valley County standards are 70. It's just this subdivision in the early 1980s, 60s, 1961, platted with a 50-foot right-of-way.
Anything at all looking at me, and you've already said the GPS lines aren't necessarily correct, but looks to me like that road needs to move south before it makes the corner. It'd really be in the center of the right-of-way, but we don't know that for sure.
We don't know any of that. And if you look at this map that was presented as part of the application, it looks like this road goes off into these lots over here. That's how inaccurate these lines are in relationship to that route.
I don't know. We have some interesting roadways in Valley County.
We do. We have a lot of those.
It might be on that property.
I just caution you about vacating anything unless we know exactly what.
Right.
Yeah, I agree 100%.
So Dan, is there anything you want to add? Anything else?
So I guess I'm just a little bit confused, because the last meeting, and in the letter, it was recommended to be approved with that 25-foot. And now I'm just, I'm getting the feeling that that's not really what you're thinking is now.
I think the concern is we're not sure that the right-of-way is, has been surveyed out. Does that make sense? It's not where the road is now. It's whether or not the right-of-way is correct.
The P and Z was comfortable enough, saying they recommended the vacation, so long as you maintained at a minimum 25 feet from center of that traveled established roadway.
So the worst that could happen is this right-of-way is correct, and they may have to move this road to the south to keep, to get the 25 feet from center line.
They just might not get all of the right-of-way that they think they're going to get, because they have to maintain 25 feet from center line. We're going to have to establish that, right, where that traveled way is.
Oh.
25 feet from center, determine where it's vacated.
And put a survey stake in that. And Dan, I think that's the thing, is just getting a survey. I don't, you know, I feel comfortable with vacating it, but you got to know where it's at. We have way too much of not knowing where roads are in this county.
Right.
The P and Z was comfortable enough with that.
So, so that makes sense. I mean, I've, I've measured this just physically, and what you see on this map is actually, you know, pretty close to my physical measurements of the center, at least, at least on my side, on, on the Longhorn side of this. Now, I guess what I'm hearing is if, if, if it's maintained that we can do this vacation with 25-foot from center of current traveled roadway, it would look similar to this orange line. And when it came around this corner, it would probably, it would probably sweep in approximately, I mean, even the 50-foot, if you guys went with just 50 feet, see, this is 88 feet. So, so if we went 50 feet, well, I guess, never mind, because we're going 25 feet from the center line. Sorry about that. But it would sweep around here if we, if we maintained that 25-foot, and instead of coming straight up, it would more than likely come about like this, about like this, and then sweep back in. Because we couldn't take anything away from these guys, obviously. So this road, is, is that what I understand? Is, is this line would continue like this, and then at the 25-foot from here, it would then sweep in to sort of like, is that, is that kind of what you have in mind?
Yes.
Yeah, I think the people at 212 Durham, that line would probably have to move in onto their lot to get to 25 feet from this, where this old existing road is built.
And that's, they wouldn't have to move anything, because they own that, and we, they would just end up with, with not, not getting any more property gifted to them from the county. They would just maintain that 15 foot that is there. So the only people that are really going to benefit from this is 214, which, to me, it looks like their, their shop is in the middle of our roadway.
That's what I was looking at, too.
And the 12881, it's probably the most of the property, or the first, and then 12879 gets a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
And potentially, the people across the road. Because if you, if you stay 25 feet off center line, that 211's going to pick up a bunch of ground.
We're not vacating that. We're just saying 25 feet from center on the one side.
On the one side?
Right.
Okay, so calling out specifically just on the north side of the road?
Yeah, the north end and the west.
Why would 211 not join this and end up picking up a ton of space and just dealing with it all at once?
In your motion that you would allow that to be vacated, I don't want to have to change all of this. That's not what was applied for.
Okay.
Yeah, they got to come out and apply for it.
That wasn't part of the application. And I, they knew what was going on. I did speak with them.
Well, I guess we'll let them come back and ask. But it really just narrows, as long as we maintain a 50-foot wide easement there, I don't have any problems with...
I don't either. I mean, it doesn't really matter where the road is. We know the roads are kind of goofy in there anyways. But as long as we have that 50-foot width where we need it, the road is already not going to be in the middle of that, so.
Okay. Everybody got any more questions for staff or Dan? Not, I'll open up the public hearing to anyone in the audience or online that is a proponent of this. Please let the record show there was none. Anyone that is neutral or uncommitted. Please let the record show there was none. Anyone that is against this. Please let the record show there was none. So then I will go ahead and...
So I need to ask one more question.
Sure.
I apologize, Chairman. So this is not maintained by the county. However, snow storage in these areas are really critical. Is this a snow storage area at all? Where you guys, when you plow snow, where do you put it?
So we, are you, are you, and am I able to speak still?
Yes.
Okay. So we have hired a private individual, most of the neighbors on this lane, and basically, they throw the snow onto each of our properties, and then they clear the driveways. So there is no real pileup anywhere, other than just on the sides of the roads, everywhere, everywhere along the sides of the roads, other than the driveway entrances.
Perfect. At least you get your driveway squares. What is benefit to that? Okay, that was the only question that came to my mind.
Hey, any more questions for staff?
No, thank you very much again for accommodating this.
Okay, then I'll close the public hearing, and we'll entertain a motion. I think Cindy has provided that in your packet.
I move to approve vacation 21-07, vacation of public right-of-way for Longhorn Way and Durham Lane and Emeny Wagon Wheels subdivision number three, authorizing the chairman to sign Resolution 2209, and authorizing the chairman to sign the deeds transferring the property once they are prepared by the applicant. This motion is made with the understanding that the vacation will not be effective until the deeds are recorded. And Cindy, do we need to add that after a survey is complete?
The Resolution 2209...
Does state it.
Calls out applicant shall have the deeds prepared for the board to sign, and it is to be reported. Vacation should not be for any of the road right-of-way. It is within 25 feet from center of traveled way as shown on a record survey.
Okay, perfect.
And it also talks about the Idaho Power.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Who did second? Any more discussion? Call in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Dan. Oh, okay. Yep. So we're assigned it, and Cindy will get it back to you, and we'll go from there.
Okay, thank you so much. You guys have a great day.
You, too.
Or we do the next one. Dave and I want to apply for a treehouse permit.
I've got a treehouse. What are you talking about?
Oh.
You get a permit?
No. It blew down in the last storm.
Did you order unsoft wood?
Exactly. It's because it's nailed to pine trees.
Oh, brother.
Sorry. Little levity on the day. Oh, tree forts, not treehouse.
Okay, Cindy, we get this signature and get this one done, we will move on to the next one, which is amendment to Title 6. which is amendment to Title VI Building Regulations. We're waiting for a notary. Is it notary or nodary?
Notary of the public, notary.
Notary of the public. Not nodary?
I need to bring my notary stamp in.
Which language do you want me to speak?
I don't know, mate. What do you want, do you?
What, Jerry?
I need to bring my notary stamp in. I could probably do some of these. Who would not want to live in a tree fort right now? Wind blowing 50 miles an hour and snowing is such a awesome.
We get enough wind, we'll all be living in a tree.
Yeah.
50 mile an hour wind's supposed to come in.
They changed it to 60.
60 now.
But there's only three inches of snow forecasted here.
Boy, that's a blizzard there.
I want to get home before that happens, so.
True, glad I'm not a little deer huddling under a tree right now.
I'm not going to the bathroom without my rope.
Where did you hear that one?
My house on the prairie.
Jerry knew what I was referring to.
It brings back memories of my youth.
I never got a rope.
You had to go out to the barn. And I mean, it used to, we used to get a lot of stony blowing. And the wind blew, you took your little rope and tied it to a tree and went out and fed, and then you got back.
That's funny. That's on all of those Western movies.
I know.
I believe you didn't have that experience as a child.
No. We actually had electricity and indoor plumbing.
Our farm animals didn't.
My brother burnt down our house when he was two years old. Went out and flipped a match.
Would you mind taking it down to you?
Started our hill on fire.
Provide it to Cindy.
Um, this has the 2021 date on it. We'll just change it.
Just change it.
For my perfect existence. Let's do two, Cindy.
Thanks, Casey. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and we'll move on. Our next and last agenda item today is a public hearing. This is an action item. This is amendment to Title VI Building Regulations. The way this will work is similar to the previous public hearing. We'll ask for expertise. We'll have an applicant, what's the word I'm thinking of?
Staff report.
Staff report, thanks, Cindy. And then we will do, open up the public hearing for those in favor, those who are neutral, and those opposed. And then we'll proceed from there. So at this time, I'll ask if anyone has any expertise on amendment to Title VI Building Regulations.
I do not.
You do not?
You don't have a treehouse?
Other than I want to build a tree fort.
And I do not either. So at this time, we will turn it over to staff.
So I'm going to give the staff report just to do the findings and conclusions of fact. And then Annette Derrick is going to be the applicant for this particular ordinance amendment.
Okay.
The staff report for the amendment to the Valley County Code Title VI Building Regulations, Agricultural Category Change and Prohibition of Tree Forts for Human Habitation. The purpose of this ordinance amendment is to limit agricultural building permits to parcels larger than five acres and classed in land use categories one through five by the Valley County Assessor and prohibit treehouses for human habitation. I listed the ordinance here and the changes that would be made in 612B, 4B. It's the elimination of category six and seven. And those categories come from the Valley County Assessor Land Use Category Table. And six and seven are productivity forest land and bare forest land. That's just an assessment, that is not a zone. And then a change to 612B, 4, inclusion of six, which says treehouses and other natural structures. Treehouses, tree forts, or tree sheds for use by children that will not be slept in and are under 30 feet shall be exempt from this code. No building permit will be issued for structures for human habitation or storage that incorporate natural vegetation such as trees, boulders, streams, straw, mud, et cetera. This does not include masonry that is part of an engineered structure. And then we included the definition for a treehouse, tree fort, or tree shed. And then listed those assessor categories. And then legal notice was posted in the Star News on December 16th and December 23rd. Potentially affected agencies were notified on December 3rd. Another sheet was posted on bulletin boards at post offices and libraries in Cascade, Donley-McCall, and Yellow Pine. The notice was posted on the Valley County website on December 3rd. And we have received no responses. That ends this portion of the staff report.
Okay, so before we go on to any further, I just had one question for you. In part of this, it talks about natural vegetation such as trees, boulders, streams, straw, and mud. There are straw houses now being built. Does that eliminate a person building?
We don't, we, that's why we included that in this is so that people don't come in for straw building permits like they do in Idaho County. I mean, they're a fire hazard, they're, they're difficult for structural engineering.
Yeah, it'd be hard for me. They're just not really designed for our environment here.
I mean, and I'll let Annette answer those questions as the applicant.
I had the same question. I just was thinking about the alternative ways that people are building homes now, like cordwood and straw and things like that. And is that something that just doesn't work here? And I'm just asking you, I don't know.
Our codes exceed the international codes. So it's really hard for a straw house, something like that, to be built up here to actually meet our codes due to the high wind, high seismic loads.
What about, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just can't imagine a straw building meeting a snow load.
I don't see it happening, but I can't say that for, you know, I'm not an engineer, but.
I, I don't claim to be a straw homing engineer or expert, but I have seen, most of the ones that I've seen have been basically built on like a pole barn structure. You know, like you would build your shop or something. And then those are just the framing in between. I mean, you're not actually engineering a building out of, I don't know, I get this three pigs reference when I start talking about these things, but you're not actually building your house out of straw or sticks.
Right, yeah.
So, I don't know, I just, that was the only thing that jumped out at me in, in the ordinance. I mean, the rest of it's fine.
Um, what about someone who sets part of their house on a boulder like a deck? I've seen that in quite a few places where instead of a foundation or a footing, they've got a big giant rock, so they just build off that.
There are a few up here, but that, that takes a lot of different engineering. I don't know if that would cover this or not. Well, if it's engineered, we thought that that would be okay. But we don't want that to be the foundation because boulders tend to roll when the mud gets wet underneath it. I mean, we've had mudslides and things here. We're just trying to allow for what happens in Valley County with soil infiltrations. We've had people call that want to build over creeks, you know, so they can watch the stream flowing underneath their house.
Yeah, and I don't think that's cool.
If there was somebody serious about wanting to build on boulders, there'd be a lot of engineering and they could apply for a variance.
I think those things should be a variance and not rule. As long as people understand they can apply for a variance, that's, that would be from your department.
Of the house on top of Crown Point is built on big boulders, big giant, big as this room. Me, that seems pretty safe. Hence, is that thing rolling off are infinitesimal.
Oh, yeah.
But I think if you've got a variance system built into it, then we can handle it when that comes. Is there any more questions for staff on any of this?
None for me.
Are.
Okay, then I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing at this time and ask for public input. We'll start out with people who are opposed.
So Annette needs to do her presentation first as the, Annette was going to do a presentation.
Oh, okay, sorry.
As the applicant.
Okay, we've, we've had a number of requests for treehouses.
Really?
Part of them from the TV show, whatever it's called, Treehouse Masters or whatever. I have talked to the state of Idaho about it. They suggested against it and to do it in ordinance because this part of the country is just not meant for it. It's hard for them to meet our, our codes and, you know, they want them over creeks and they want the natural features of it. I just don't think we can do it. You got to have a sewer. How's that going to not freeze? You have to have an arborist look at the tree to make sure it'll be sturdy enough. We have lots of windstorms up here, that type of thing. We're going to talk about the ag permits and the, what we're seeing in the forest lands. And to change the categories from six to seven, the reason I'm asked, or get those out of there. I'm asking, we've got one Elk Creek Baptist Church across the street with that big berm. That started out as a $5 permit. Now it's a 4,600 square foot house. We've got a couple on West Mountain. One, they have the same exact sized structures. One got it under forestry and the other did not because he said he didn't have it. He wasn't using it as an ag permit. This guy's, or this person, I should say, is forestry, but he's putting all his toys in it. He's told people that, I know that. And that's happening a lot. There's a lot of, yeah, a lot of toys going into these great big buildings. And the six and seven forestry and forest productivity, it's just how.
And, and at the five acres, and I said, I think it comes from state code. We can't raise that five acres.
I don't think so. You could. I mean, you can go more restrictive than state code.
Well, the reason I bring that up because I don't know too many places up here that make a living as a farm off five acres. Now, a landscape company could, so there's got to be a variance to some of this because, you know, a nursery could certainly do make a good profit off a five acre parcel. But if you're raising anything else, five acres isn't going to do enough to really make a living on.
But it's five acres or more, right?
Or more.
None of this says they can't get a regular building permit. It just means they're not getting the $5 or $25 now.
$25 exemption.
Farms shall mean attractive land in excess of five acres wholly. So that, five acres wholly, if you got a five acre parcel and you built your house on one acre, you don't qualify. You'd have to have six acres.
Yeah, that's what Jan was saying last time. And I like the exclusion number two. You can't convert it into any structure, any livable structure without getting a building permit. And then one of the concerns, I think, that is out there is these guys, so the $25 permit that's off Highway 55 built that whole thing with no building review. So they built it and now we can't go in and check anything. There's, you know, for health and safety reasons, there's no way to review their work. I've seen some pretty shoddy construction.
The bus barns were an ag permit.
Bus barns?
It was a $5 ag permit.
That's crazy.
How did they, when there's no egg around there, how do they, just because they have more than five acres?
Because they were in those categories. We're, we're trying to be a lot more careful now and making sure that the new owners are going to qualify.
Troy agrees.
But a lot of people, you know, they're buying these large pieces of property and they want to come up and, we get that they want to store their tractor or whatever. But they also want to store their snowmobiles and their RVs and sleep in their RVs and.
Exactly.
It's just more than something that's needed to maintain their civil culture use.
Okay, any more questions? I'm going to move on.
I don't know if you think this is strong enough. I mean, because that scenario, I mean, you can't convert it. But if you think about somebody living in their barn structure, I mean, you almost have to put in it some way that it's, it's livable structure. You know, they put in bathrooms in the barns. I mean, that's.
So approval of this, just for the record, would be ordinance 2022-01. And we put some whereas's here. Each of you should have a copy of this. Whereas, ordinance is adopted to promote the protection.
That was the word document that you sent, right?
Yes. Protect the consideration of the health, safety, and general welfare of the people of Valley County. Whereas agricultural building permits do not undergo any review or meet any adopted building codes. Whereas not allowing a structure to be constructed with an agricultural permit does not prohibit the construction of a structure. Whereas agricultural building permits are intended for the storage of agricultural products and not for human occupants to reuse. Whereas we have found that agricultural permits issued for silviculture properties are soon converted to storage for personal items, recreational vehicles, and human habitation. Whereas treehouses and similar structures are not adequate enough to withstand Valley County object weather microbursts and high winds. Whereas large amount of land in Valley County is within the wildland urban interface and does not allow any type of fire wise landscaping. Whereas it's not recommended to have electricity running and swaying trees due to concern of fire in the wildland urban interface and the required state electrical permits. Whereas treehouses damage trees. Whereas treehouses should be located in hardwoods, not trees found in Valley County, which tend to be softwoods with shallow root systems. Whereas cold weather causes concern with freezing septic sewer lines and potable water. Whereas it's not acceptable to build over streams, boulders, and other natural features that are not anchored or stable. Those are the reasons for the proposal.
Okay, so then I'm going to go ahead and on with the public hearing. At this time, I'll take any testimony from people in the audience or online that are a proponent of this. Anyone that's in favor of this? Let the record show there was none. I'll take testimony from anybody who is neutral or uncommitted. Please let the record show there's none. And then I'll move on to take any, any testimony from people that are opposed to this ordinance. Please let the record show there was none. So then I will close the public hearing and we'll begin deliberations. Or a motion, if you're so moved.
I'm pretty moved.
Move it.
I've made the motion that we approve ordinance 22-01, changes to Title VI Discontinuing Agricultural Buildings on Assessor's Category Six and Category Seven, Unallowing Treehouses for Human Habitation is presented and authorizing the chairman to sign the ordinance with an effective date of January 13, 2022.
I'll second that.
Who did second? Any more discussion? The honest be just and fair not. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, then I will close the public hearing. Thank you, everyone, for all your hard work. And we're getting there.
Thank you.
Good job.
It's time to do no business agreement.
Yep, and that's what I was going to do next.
And the general public?
I don't, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if that is the new one or the old one. We got a new copy at lunch.
Okay. Yep, we got three of them here. Is everybody good with this? And I need a notary.
Yeah, the changes on the dates remain.
We need a notary for this one, too, if it gets approved.
He said that the date would sign that after we did.
Okay. So is everybody agreed with this one? I think he's got everything covered.
Yeah, it looks like the changes were all made that we wanted.
So I would entertain a motion to approve this MOU for no business route for the 21-22 season.
So moved.
Seconded.
Who did second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So that's done. I'll sign that one in case she comes back. And now we're at the point at the end of our meeting where we have an opportunity for general. And now we're at the point, at the end of our meeting, where we have an opportunity for general public to present. Are you, sir, here for that?
Yes, sir.
Please come to the mic, state your name and the town you live in, don't need your address, just your town.
Um, Charlie Gowing.
Charlie, welcome.
Thank you, Cascade, Idaho. Um, I was, it was brought to my attention of this meeting today after I tried to get a hold. And are you guys in charge of the fire district, I heard it being talked about?
No, they have a whole separate board of commissioners. Cascade Fire District has their own commissioners and they, all we do is collect their taxes for them and send it to them every year.
That's the problem, we're on a small parcel up here with about five or six or a dozen, I don't know, cause they won't respond to our request that we were not included when we were annexed into the city up on Duffer's Lane. And John Combs, as you might know, he brought it to our attention a couple of years ago that we had no fire protection. And when we contacted them, they said, we're sending letters out to everybody, we never got them. Last couple of years, we've been aware of it, so now we're paying this fee totally. And I don't know why we're surrounded by
Yeah.
Fire district and our little group there isn't, so it won't do any good to talk to you guys.
Charlie, I'm not gonna try, I'm not trying to put you off, but Cindy Eric was just on the city council, I think she could probably help you answer your question, I think you have to petition. So Cindy, Cindy, could you help this guy?
Charlie, can I get your last name again, I apologize, just for the record.
Um, last name is Gowing, G as in George, O-W-I-N-G.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie, have a good day, good luck. So if no, nothing else is on the agenda, I'll adjourn the meeting and go home and try and get warm. Lot of snow.
Go home before it gets cold.
Did, did you get enough wind to blow your lane shut or open?
Uh, driveway stays.